Yep.
This is the latest in some of this criteria.
Yeah.
It's shorter.
As I was moving your.
Based on what you mean.
I was asked earlier.
They got.
I thought about big case.
The beam would have.
One thing.
Here.
I wouldn't be.
We were just.
We'll do it.
Oh, hey, hey, that's the magic happening.
We got it.
Pretty old.
Oh, kids can be there and I want I'm gonna say everybody.
Can you see that to you?
Yeah. We got a job saying.
If he says.
No, I said this for anything.
Sorry.
Okay, we did this live streaming.
Um. We're really huge.
I'm here, Scott.
Okay, Ryan, thank you. I've got five thirty of my caller meeting to order. A reminder to everyone that we are live streaming tonight during the public forum. If you'd like to speak, we're gonna ask you to come up to the table so you can more easily be seen by the camera that we've got up here. We have three board members that are out of state tonight. Only Ryan is able to join us virtually. The two of us in person and Brian virtually. So with that note, I'm going to ask for a motion on the agenda.
Some move.
And a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, let's go to consent items. These are all divided to everyone. In your drop boxes, if there's any questions or comments, please go ahead and ask. If not, a big motion to approve.
Second.
And a second from Ryan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both passes. Any declaration of conflict of interest from anyone? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to public forum. I'm gonna utilize the two-minute limit that we've utilized in the last few meetings. It's worked effectively. And Tyson, I think you had asked to speak. Do you want to go first?
Absolutely.
Come on up to the table, please.
Yeah, no, this is new. We got it. Give me just a minute.
It's for the live stream.
Can you look at?
I understand.
Take your time, please.
We gotta go, Tom? Okay. Good afternoon, board members. I'm here to speak as my role as one of the head coaches for the Denver Archery Club to address you and our archery parents that have concerns for this archery season. The Denver Archery Club Board began preparations for twenty-five, twenty-six season in early June of this year. At that time, we sent an email to several administrators and school officials to discuss several meeting dates and other deadlines that are of great importance to the archery club and students who participate. Unfortunately, that email and several others through through the following months went unanswered until just a few days ago. The delayed response has put the club in a position to be forced to delay the beginning of this season for a few weeks from our traditional October start time. Now we're looking into November. Despite our best efforts to schedule and plan with our available timeline, we are now unable to offer our successful archery trial period that we intimate implemented last season for new archers that were wanting to test the waters before jumping into a full archery season. We are very excited to hear the news that the practice room will be receiving a much anticipated upgrade with the installation of new turf flooring. That is something we have been discussing with administration since the club's beginning, and thank you for the improvement to the facility. We have one of the best practice facilities of any school in the state, and we're grateful that we'll we'll be even better this season. To address some concerns, the club is hearing from our archers, parents, sponsors, and coaching staff. We're asking for more open lines of communication from administration and the school board liaisons about the archery program. There are several upcoming hard deadlines for national and state NAST programs as well as club, the club internally, that have been communicated to the school officials and need to be met for the club to have another successful season and hopefully host our first highly anticipated home invitational. Planning and supporting over a hundred student archers for weekly practices and invitationals takes a lot of administrative time and coordination to work all the moving pieces and can often only be handled by one individual due to the complexity of the NAST registration process. This first home invitational that we are still hoping to host.
We're at two minutes.
Seriously.
Thank you.
This affects so many families in the district. We're gonna stick for two minutes.
Good for you.
Are you kidding me?
Yeah, because it's not for anything that goes against the.
Are you?
The first, I'm also a coach, the first home invitational that we are still hoping to host on December twentieth, twentieth will be great. Will be a great opportunity to show the community how the sport of archery is for every student as well as showcase the Cyclone Center facility to community members who are not the traditional athletes, athletic supporters. We have received a great deal of interest from other school archery clubs wanting to attend our event from across the state and local communities. This is something that we are very excited to host and offer our archers. However, if we cannot finalize the plan of some important details with the school district very soon, we will be forced to give up our reserved date in the NAST system to another local school district who graciously offered the date to us so we can host this year. We look forward to another great archery season of growing the Denver NAST archery team, our archery students, and continued collaboration with Denver School District for the season while into the future of the program. Thank you. Um, just so you guys all know, we have over a hundred and seventy kids on our roster. That's more than any other club, and you guys are messing with them. We have kids on our club who cannot do any other sport. I hope you take that into consideration instead of keep continuing to mess us around.
Thank you.
You know, it's funny for a board that cares so much about decorum and all of a sudden board policies. You realize board policy says meetings aren't supposed to start till six, but ever since that little device showed up, now we're worried about two minutes. Two minutes when a hundred different families are gonna be affected by this, but make sure we watch the clock, huh? All right, so let's get going. Now I'm starting my speech. So like I said, strange, since the board can't even follow its own policy on start times. Policy says six P M. For almost two years, it's been five thirty with no change. According to last month's minutes, attorney fees were the second highest the school has had paid out since October of twenty twenty-four. Why is that? And we have yet to hear an official district statement about the coach and teacher who were investigated over the summer for allegedly having inappropriate communications with a female student. Why has the district seemingly wiped its hand of the situation? If anyone moving forward to hearings with administrative law judges ends up losing their teaching or coaching license, what's the plan? Who covers their role, short or long term? Do we have a plan for that, folks? And if that happens, how will the board communicate with parents in the community? What's the plans to address the charges so the same behavior doesn't continue here? Lastly, a reminder to Denver voters, school board elections are not popularity contests, so when you go to the polls in November, just understand you are voting to challenge this behavior and what the Trump kills described. You need somebody on the board that's willing to stand up here and speak out. Somebody that will actually show up to a school board meeting and not run their mouth on social media, not look good in their big emergency vehicles. You know who I'm talking about. When I asked that individual not to deliver Denver students across town in the back of pickup trucks, I got no response. Of course, I got no response. Then when I brought it up, I got told, I'm in charge. You will talk to me. That's who you'll talk to. We need somebody that's gonna talk decent to people, that's gonna actually listen to parents in this district. Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Hi, uh, my name is Chris. Uh, good evening. My family has been part of the Denver School District since two thousand thirteen. Aside from preschool, Denver is the only school my children have known, and our experience has been overwhelmingly positive. For context, I came from Cedar Falls School District and my wife from suburb of Chicago. When we were looking for an acreage in the Cedar Valley area, we found an opportunity to join the Denver District, and based on what I knew, we made the move. Last year, at some point, the school sent out a link to statewide testing data. I happened to review it, and what I found shocked me. To clarify, the rating system has six levels. Exceptional is the highest, then high performing, commendable, acceptable, needs improvement, and then lastly, priority is the at the bottom. Where did Denver land? Denver Elementary received the highest possible rating, exceptional. Denver Elementary was only outscored by five other schools in this entire state. That's out of approximately three hundred and thirty districts. The middle school and high school both earned the second highest rating, high performing. These results can all be seen at the Iowa Department of Education website at IA School Performance dot gov. Naturally, I got curious, being from Cedar Falls, how did they rank? Cedar Falls School received a needs improvement rating, fifth out of the six ratings. I was absolutely stunned. CF was always considered the rich kid school with all the resources, yet the highest rating in their district was only commendable, third out of six. How about Waverly Shaw Rock? Highest rating also commendable. Waterloo? Unfortunately, just one school rated commendable. All others in the district far below. By the data, Denver isn't just the best school district in the area. It's one of the best in the state. It's an inarguable fact. Denver has not disappointed, and I'm glad that my kids will get to say they attended Denver School District. So I want to say thank you to the school board, to Superintendent Brad Lowers, uh, to the principals Josh, Paul, and Taylor, and of course, all the teachers. And I'm sure I'm missing many others, but lastly, I want to thank all those that came before, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let's move to old business, which we don't have any. Let's go to new business, and I believe the customer is gonna give us some info on the greenhouse project.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna talk about the greenhouse project that we've been looking at now for quite a while. Um, I wanna wanna share, uh, wanna share kind of what we're what we're looking at. Um, we've we've looked at the possibility of combining it with some learning space and uh, and what that would look like. These guys are gonna talk about that. Um, I originally thought we were going to look at a possible approval tonight. I don't think we're quite there with some of the some of the building codes and stuff to make sure we need all of those building codes. So this is informational. Um, hopefully, uh, if it's something that we want to keep looking at, we'll take a closer look and maybe approve it at next month's meeting.
Yep. So here we go. Couple half million dollars will be there looking at it.
That's not an attention getter. I don't know what is.
Again, just a fun to dream, right? So let's get into the real bit. Some of our objectives, just uh, look at the greenhouse project. So Karen, she'll elaborate a little bit here on funding, but she's done a lot of legwork getting some funds in place through grants and so forth to get a greenhouse underway. Um, uh, myself and my some of my advanced kids would love to be part of the building process. It's kind of right on our back door. So could save a substantial amount of money that way, too, um, as well as the kids will love it. Uh, and then discuss a future learning center slash lab, uh, greenhouse combo as opposed to just solely a greenhouse with with limited space that way. And then, uh, uh, yep, Brad, myself, and Taylor and Karen have all been in cahoots about, um, potential, you know, uh, financial options for us. Um, so on and so forth. So Karen, I'll let you talk a little bit about what you've done so far.
So we have, uh, funds through grants that have already been received for fourteen thousand three hundred twenty-nine dollars. Um, we, uh, through the Denver Savings Bank have earmarked eighty-five hundred. And then we're thinking our mom sells, big plug this Friday and Saturday, uh, we'll sell them some mums. We're thinking that's gonna bring anywhere from three to five thousand dollars. We also have some future grants on, um, the horizon we'd like to see. Uh, that would be the Farm Credit Service Grant with Alliance Plug for twenty-five thousand. And then because I was a STEM extern last summer, I had the opportunity to apply for a STEM Best Grant, which is, uh, fifty thousand dollars. And it only, one of the only requirements is matching twenty-five thousand dollar funds. Um, so that is a good step in the right direction there for us.
Yeah. Can I ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
So the the current funds that you have secured, those grants, are there any restrictions on how soon that money has to be used?
No.
Okay. And then, did you just say that the STEM Best Grant of fifty thousand would require twenty-five thousand in matching?
Correct.
Is that matching from the school district or do these other grants?
It could be labor, it could be it gifts in kind, it could be anything that's given to the school for the greenhouse bagware and stuff.
Okay. Good, yes. So really, that's a, it's a seventy-five thousand dollar grant.
It is, correct, correct.
As long as you can secure the twenty-five. Yeah. Very good. Uh, here just kind of a rough sketch again, Karen and I and and others have been brainstorming, like, what do we want? What makes the most sense? Um, with the with the south-facing portion being the greenhouse, uh, you can see an entry door and the learning center. The it's kind of a clear garage door, the ability to open it and have kids throughout with direct supervision and then kind of a viewing window, which is just a feed off of my classroom that I love being able to see everywhere at all times and know where kids are. Uh, here's an aerial, kind of just a screenshot, but here's our store, here's our our south, here's the wrestling room, the south shop, the little storage shed we have here. This was kind of our proposed location, uh, as to where it would would fall. Uh, some more, just some visuals to get you a little bit of where we're heading in options again, uh, kind of a lean-to setting where it's all south-facing, lots of south sun. We think it would look kind of neat to the bike trail where people will see the the growing lights and the plants and so forth. Um, another, just an idea of, uh, how how the learning center could connect to a gable building, if you will, um, so on and so forth. Just some things the kids and I are, um, and again, Mr. Lowers and I are in cahoots about making sure it's the cold, all the fire settings, and that's what's kind of holding us up a little bit. Making sure we're dotting those i's and crossing those t's. Uh, but again, I love the hands-on, the 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 simple construction of it, so on and so forth. Few things we'd obviously have to outsource, uh, you know, digging the footings and stuff, myself and former student or any way to cut costs there. Electrical, the state requires that be done by a certified electrician. HVAC, and then if we can, you know, the car will on some of the the technical side of internet and so forth. I thought if you go back to that slide, that's what I especially like about these types of private, they were the hands-on learning. Yep. Opportunity for us to, and the kid, the the kids love it. It's real, it's there. It's not just a project, it's it's has a big purpose.
So, uh, we would really like to add, um, the Ag Learning Center, um, after the greenhouse is built, um, or in conjunction with the greenhouse. And the benefits for this is more space for the classroom objectives, things like making birdhouses, uh, planting pots, hydroponics, soil judging, dissections, access to animals for use in the classroom, uh, washing vegetables, storage of pot soils and chemicals, and appropriate space for conducting labs. And so those are all the things I can do with this, um, updated space. And then a shorter time needed to travel between garden and location of trees and walking trail and those types of things. I would just be in the area I would need to be in. And I do love my current room, but you know, at the time of building, we didn't plan to have an ag teacher. And so really, um, a an updated room or something would be, um, something I would desire and would allow, uh, more education to go on in my classroom. Uh, things like, you know, more sinks, concrete floors, uh, more storage would be beneficial to that area.
I think when she says access to animals, we we probably wouldn't house animals in it, but instead of having to go up to the second floor currently, you'd have access to them right right out there.
Maybe I was could bring a dairy cow. We could learn how to tag it, how to care for it, those types of things. They can then bring it home.
Yeah, they still could do that upstairs, but it'd be really inconvenient.
Yeah, it would be.
So how many students refresh memory? Would it house in the learning center part of the greenhouse? Yeah, and again, we were just kind of spitballing off the size. So like this drawing here puts the this part about the exact same size as my classroom for frame of reference, forty-two by twenty-four, give or take. Um, again, can very cheap to go up or down ten feet if you want to. Um, if the space allows back there and so forth, working out some of those fine details is. And you hold how many kids? Uh, I've had twenty-four in there, making ball. It's fun and exciting, but and and not crowded by any means, in my opinion. And this greenhouse can be, is it through like through farm tech? Is that what you were talking about going to them? So it could be added on to? Yeah. If the future. Yeah. Absolutely. And, uh, things we're trying to look at to plan ahead. Anything. Probably difficult to add on to the south. No, yeah, it'd be to the east, to the east, either add on because of that. And still ironing out some of them details for what, but yeah, I love that thought of thinking ahead to more growth. And in this location, is that the one where we had to, we're gonna have to reroute the drainage? A little bit. This this gets better, uh, because we're not going as far south. Yep. So just to be transparent here, this is a retention pond. And there's a ditch here that allows for that to overflow in the event of a torrential rain. Uh, where the the talk is and working with an architect, uh, there's no reason we can't move that south a little bit. And her and I were talking also, it'd be fun if we're gonna do it to make some of this flatter and more functional, this this western space for, I forget what we said, but.
Well, like to put mums on or something.
You just traffic. If you gotta do the grading work, you might as well. Absolutely. Yep, yep. So thinking and again, down the road, think more long-term vision. How how many students do you have in ag?
Forty-five.
Forty-five. Are they? Uh, how do you break them up? There's like two classes a day or?
I I teach, uh, four. One of those is eighth grade exploratory.
Okay.
And those are not in my cap numbers because I have thirty in that class.
So roughly fifteen in each class. Yeah, yeah.
And I do teach four periods here.
Yeah. That's again, I just like the idea of being able to open it up if you want that space to turn it into a almost like a rolling thing where it opens it up and go in big space if the guy needs to. See here, here's some more fundraising options we've looked at.
Um, we haven't, uh, really, um, sought donors in town yet, um, besides the selling of the mums. Uh, and then, you know, uh, we have been resourceful on hiring subcontractors and being able to, uh, do things, um, within our power whenever we can, uh, using local resources, uh, and local contacts for that.
Yep. Um, and then Karen and I sat down just recently and looked at the application for STEM Best. Uh, I think between her and I, we can really get that fired off pretty reasonably and I think the due date's November, so I'm there to do that. Um, yeah, come January, we'd know where we're sitting real good financially in terms of funds and grants and. So, yeah.
So big picture for me is, uh, we definitely need to do a greenhouse at some point. And I'd like to, I'd like to try to do this with the learning center as a part of it. We'll find out more as we get closer to January, whether whether those grants will be a part of it, but, uh, but yeah, that's, we definitely want to move forward with with some aspects of this for sure.
Ideally, you thought you'd like to kind of break ground this fall, correct? If. In a perfect world. Cross permits. Yeah, um, but we had talked, uh, you know, if we could only get the greenhouse or if doing the greenhouse now would hinder, you know, a larger venture that would give her more space and a better setup, in my opinion. I'd rather wait and do it right.
It sometimes seems easier to write the grants when you're doing it for lots of manor greenhouse. So that's kind of the thought behind that.
Yeah.
Is that we can pitch both.
That's kind of where my mind's at, too, is yeah, probably a few more pieces to kind of get in place before we get too far ahead, but I very much like the idea very much. I think it it solves us, helps solve some space issues in the current high school, middle school, right? And brings a hands-on opportunity, a big hands-on opportunity for all these kids to participate in. And then you end up with a hands-on classroom, you know, right? Not that you don't have that now, but you know, a different hands-on classroom. So, yeah, I I like it very much. I.
I'm. Actually. I'm in the, I'll go ahead. I I'm in the same boat. I think this is a is a great project. I I really appreciate some vision you guys have shown. You know, look at the greenhouse and the and the, yeah, the space for the classroom. And also looking at that the grants really not just, uh, for us to be able to to do something, but to really be able to do something that's very well done and stuff. I appreciate that and and look forward to what we see going forward.
Thank you. Yeah, okay, I I'm gonna make a motion to table this until the next meeting so that you you'll get some of that piece together a little better and hopefully you have some clarity then. It's very much appreciate you coming in and and walking us through this. This is very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your time, both with exploring the grants and with just the spitballing some of the drawings and what it would look like. It's it's great to work with you guys on the stuff.
Yep. Continue on. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Scott made a motion to table up.
Yes.
Second motion.
Second. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Okay. Let's go to the approval of the memo of understanding of junior junior achievement.
Yeah, that's pretty simple. Uh, we we use, uh, junior achievement with kindergarten through fifth grade, uh, seventh and eighth grade have access to it, too, and we have a high school class that uses it as well. Just an annual a- approval of that agreement with junior achievement.
Someone like to make a motion to approve? The move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Let's go to sharing agreement with Janesville.
Yeah, so we're hosting, Taylor, is it seven intro to engineering students right now that are uh, freshman students that are coming and and, uh, joining in our intro to engineering class, so we need to approve that agreement to share that with them.
Uh, I would move to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Pat. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Sharing agreement with, uh, Dunkerton?
Yeah, kind of the same thing. We have, uh, we we share Karen with with them. Uh, in this case, it's a little different. Instead of sharing students, we're sharing a staff member, so uh, we split it, split the cost by periods. We have, they have her for two periods of the day, so they pay for two of of the periods she has.
I'd move to approve that. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All, motion passes. Go to approval of consent agenda personnel matters.
Yeah, this is for, um, the first one is TLC. And and that is a mentor for a new teacher that we have. And that mentor is Tim Baird, so approving that. Uh, also proving some TLC facilitators, Alicia Adams, uh, Tim Baird again, and Claudia Pino for that.
Brad. We have one more ad. We have Jada Habsba for.
I I I believe she's the mentee.
I'm sorry, Jordan Kluber for for Jada.
Cora, Cora Campbell.
Oh, okay. So can we add that one on there?
Cora?
Mm-hmm.
You.
Cora Campbell as a TLC facilitator?
No. Cora is Jordan's mentor, year two. He was a brand new teacher.
Oh, got you now. Okay, alright.
So Cora and Tim as mentors.
Anybody else? No, that's it.
Okay. Ryan or Pat have questions on those?
Nope.
I'd entertain a a motion to approve those. But it goes, so move.
Second.
The motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Let's go to.
No, we got, we got more.
Got others, I know, that's.
Um, so yeah, new associates, Stormy Brake and Jessica Schwaki. Um, Stormy is coming to us from Head Start, I believe, in Plainfield. She had worked there. And Jessica was one of our, um, worked with a nursing student, agree this year. Then that's another one.
She's not official. She's not officially accepted yet, Jessica. Let's see. I'd take her off for now.
Okay, take her off.
Take Jessica off?
Yeah, for now.
Okay, so we're just talking Stormy. Great. And let's go ahead and grab the other ones here. I'll do a motion for.
Deb Borwick is going to help us with prom, and she also does homecoming as well. Uh, is gonna help us in that role again. Jordan Kluber for yearbook. Brianna Fritake for middle school yearbook. Emily Hoff is going to do her technology event coordinator role that she's done in the past. Um, you see it at games, uh, she's the one that inputs a lot of the stuff on the boards. And you also see when you walk through the hallways, she also does some of the Facebook posting for the district as well. And then Joe Frost for middle school football. We we had some coverage where we needed more coverage there for a while, and, uh, they also have pretty large numbers right now, so we've asked him to help with middle school football.
Okay, any questions or a motion? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Let's go to, uh, do you want to do superintendent report first? First on the list.
Sure, somehow. Somehow I end up there. That way I can steal all their stuff. And they won't have anything.
Yeah, fine, sorry.
Alright, so, uh, enrollment, the, uh, this is very unofficial. This is very preliminary. But our enrollment, uh, we do a rough count. Um, I call it, uh, rears and seats number. It's how many kids are actually here sitting in the classrooms. And that number is nine hundred and sixty-five. That is up eighteen from previous year, so that's a, that's a nice little number. It's very preliminary, though, because a lot of things can happen with enrollment. You have kids come, you have kids go. Um, you also have, uh, that doesn't figure in preschool. We get half of the waiting for preschool, so sometimes that'll move it around a little bit. Uh, other waitings of kids sometimes move it around, but it's it's a safe estimate to say we're very pleased. Eighteen is a good size. Uh, good, good number of growth there, so.
Is October the date of unofficial?
Yep. Yep, that's when it, that's when that that number of kids in the seats counts.
And how many? Uh, how many are in elementary? How many are in middle school? How many in high school? Be out.
Well, you get to say that during your reports.
Yeah, you're gonna talk. Sorry, I hit him on the side.
Yep, uh, also. Yep, uh, also, uh, I don't wanna talk too much about homecoming, but are you gonna talk about homecoming?
I got it here, stuff you can.
I'll skip that one, uh, we had our district kickoff with our staff. And it was, it was a great, great start to the year, I wanna thank our Lions for doing a luncheon for our entire staff on that first day that we had everybody back. Um, also wanna thank Denver Savings Bank for shirts for our entire staff. Um, they, and they also did a teacher luncheon during that week, uh, it was very, very much appreciated. Very high level of energy with the staff and with the students to start the year, it's one of the smoothest starts I've ever experienced, just with. With, uh, everything coming into place and, and just, just a great, great start of the year. A theme this year, couldn't reveal it last, last month, is win the day. Um, I don't know if these guys are gonna talk about that as well, but, uh, that's a, that's a good little theme to. Have those little victories and celebrate those things along the way of, of the great things going on. Uh, last thing I wanna talk about is Iwalu, what a great experience for, for our kids. Uh, special thank you to our teachers, our, uh, volunteer adult and high school kids that were volunteers and. On that as well, and the students, uh, students were having a great time, I, I get to go over and help out with a little bit, uh, on one of the nights and. And it's always a highlight for me to do that as well, so just can't say enough good things about that Iwalu experience for all of our kids, it's a. It's a time in their lives that they'll always remember. That's all I have.
Good. Mr. Senator.
Uh, yep, so Brad touched on Iwalu, um, I do wanna thank, uh, in addition to that, uh. Uh, the immortal Kevin Tietenhall also joined us, uh, to help with fishing. Kids still remember him, but it's getting weird because some, there's gonna be a point where they're not gonna know him, and that's gonna be odd, and I don't think I'm gonna like that. Um, but also wanted to thank Mr. Reverts and Jen Brotherson for driving us, we gotta get there, that's a big, a big deal. Um, but yeah, I just wanted to thank, um, our fifth grade team starts planning this, I don't know, uh, let's call it. January of the year prior, um, and even though the main lodge is being torn down, so we'll hopefully be in a new lodge next year. The main lodge there, um, is gonna be renovated, actually torn down, but they did a great job. Um, our elementary school number, um, right now is at four hundred and twenty-four. Um, and that is, that is down three from last year. Which I don't, I don't know how my math math and that, even though we added about twenty-five new kids. Um, we had a huge fifth grade class that left, and that usually, uh, usually takes us, we got about ninety kids that leave and bring in. That's where we landed, so.
Are they sprinkled fairly evenly across?
Yeah, yeah, we got really lucky this year, there was a, a couple years back where it was all fourth grade, and every kid that came was fourth grade, it was a joke with. Danny Merzak and I, but, yeah, very good, very good, uh, great new families coming into our area, which we love.
Uh, and I would just, I would reiterate, Iwalu and others, very successful year, I've heard that from so many parents, um. Chaperone parents who went, took the time to reach out to me, post Iwalu and talk about what a wonderful experience it was for them. As well, and I think oftentimes we forget about the fact that Iwalu has a big impact on the fifth grade kids, their whole life. As well as the chaperone parents, the high school kids who come back and do it. Well.
Yeah.
Very important part of what we are in a, in this community, so, but thank you.
But.
Uh, let's go to middle school, Paul.
Yeah, um, like Brad kinda, um, stated, we're off to a great start there, and, uh, we really welcome new sixth graders that transitioned into our building. Um, I got to spend a couple hours with them last, um, spring, and then I brought them in the summer for a, a day of sixth grade orientation, and, um. It, it has gone pretty, pretty well, um, a few schedule things that they, uh, get a little bit confused with at the beginning, but, uh, we're, we're in round two already. And we're really good in as far as rotation, so, um, things are well there. I also put down the middle school fall activity numbers and so forth, and, um, again, um, as Brad said, there's forty-two boys out for football. That's some of our highest numbers we've had for years at the seventh, eighth grade level, uh, cross-country at twenty-four, volleyball is thirty-five. And our cheer squad is at eleven, um, Nikki Score is gonna do a middle school play again in, um, the, toward the end of October. And, uh, forty-eight students showed up for.
Oh, wow.
Interest, so that, which is outstanding. And so she's having tryouts today and tomorrow, and then, uh, they'll be starting practices and so forth, but. Um, totally appreciate her offering at a middle school level, and as you can see, there's a high, high interest in that. And then our middle school numbers are there, um. Two hundred and fifty-two students total in grade six, seven, and eight, and, um, that is up, um, about twelve students, muster.
Um, you attribute that to, is it just elementary kids moving into middle school, is it?
We attend new families this year too.
Thank you.
Yeah, at high school level, um, I mean, just to kinda piggyback off of that, it's really neat to see the students getting involved, um, in, in elementary as it builds to middle school. And then you see that, I mean, having forty-eight students in the middle school play is only gonna help in high school as we get older too, so it should really need to see that progression of all these things. Um, at the high school level, we have, um, basically about seventy to seventy-five per grade right now, um. The number is not a hundred percent official, it's there, it's two eighty-nine, um, I think it's actually just a little bit lower than that, we've had quite a bit of movement, even at the beginning of the year, either in or out. Um, uh, we had about, uh, ten new students as well, so, um, that is a little high, I think it's gonna be actually a little more around, um. Two seventy-eight, but still trying to pin all that down, we've, it's been great, we've, we have students that are, you know, um, coming in for different things. But we're, that's only our full-time kids, we have, we have a lot more students in our building than, than are just full-time, so they're getting great opportunities. Um, homecoming week though, that's coming up here, and, uh, just wanted to give a shout out to our student council and Mr. Swales. Uh, they do a fantastic job, and really, he's led that in a way that the students are taking on a large, a large portion of this, and that's, they love it. Um, it's probably one of the favorite memories that a high school student will have is homecoming week and all the things we do. A couple highlights, uh, for sporting events, we've got cross-country and volleyball on Tuesday night, um, and, uh, during this week. Um, so not necessarily, they're both away unfortunately, but still a big week to celebrate, um, and then we play Hanson Dumont Cal on Friday night, the third. Um, at seven o'clock, so, um, that's when we'll do our, um, crowning, king and queen, and all the things on Friday night. Uh, as far as the student events and things throughout the week, um, and community, uh, we'll have a big rally on Sunday, the twenty-eighth, and the little, uh, parade we have. Leading up to the football field, and then, um, we'll, and we'll get some more information out soon on that, but we'd love for people to come out to the community pep rally. And the parade, and then we do a volleyball night for the students on Sunday night. Uh, Monday night, we have a bags tournament, which is always a whole bunch of fun, and a lot of students involved. We're gonna do pickleball this year, and then we'll have our dance on Saturday night, so, um. That'll be a fun week, you're live. Uh, Thursday is a big day for us because we have a K-12 pep rally, uh, where we bring everybody into the gym, and the energy is incredible. And we look for any opportunity we can to, to get all of our students together. And we'll have some dress-up days and, and a whole bunch of other fun, fun things, but that's just kind of a little highlight, uh, theme is space this year.
Okay.
Space. Yeah, it's gonna be out of this little.
And in terms of your aroma?
Yeah.
What do you, what do you see happening, is it?
Um, I see that, um, so last year, we, um, we graduated, um, we have like sixty-one seniors, so everything is trending up. I mean, we, we're starting to notice our, you know, uh, we're just getting more students in there, and, uh, we're sitting right around seventy though, about seventy per class, so. But then next year, we're gonna bring in, uh, the eighth graders.
Yeah, you're seeing that, that bubble.
Oh, yeah, yeah, ninety-four ourselves, or that, that's that, so.
I remember when that big bubble was in kindergarten.
Yeah, so we are, uh, gearing up for that, and having conversations around, you know, make sure we're ready for that, and it'd be great, so.
Okay, Ryan, any, you have any questions for the admin?
No, uh, I don't overall, I think one thing I would like to see is, you know, we can get together on the, the enrollment numbers and just look at it like. You know, per building by year, and so we can forecast what that looks like over the next few years, um, I think that'd be, that'd be an interesting view of, of what that looked like.
Yeah, okay, Pat, anything you wanna? I don't have anything tonight, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn. The move. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned, thank you. Cross-country runners, how was?